Good morning and welcome to the June 14, 2018 business meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and ask the county administrator to please take the role.
Well, good morning, commissioners. We have Mr. Stephen Madcor here, serving as your county counsel, and Mary Rathke, serving as your clerk to the board. I'll do the role, beginning with Commissioner Humbiston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard. Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Don, what's up today?
Okay, so the very first item we have is a presentation. Now, we did remove an item from the agenda that will be placed on next week's agenda, the presentation regarding the city of Damascus and excess fund disbursements. That's been taken off the agenda, but what is on the agenda is a presentation supporting the 2018 Pride Parade, and we have Deputy County Administrator Laurel Butman here to present this item to you.
Hi, is it on? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Good. So, thank you very much, Don, and I want to, first of all, recognize in the audience, we have a couple people here from our Q&amp;A Queers and Allies Networking Group that does all of the superhuman work to pull off this Pride Festival every year. Would you raise your hands, please? Thank you for coming. So, since 2015, so this is our fourth year, we have participated in the Pride Northwest Festival. It includes having a booth at the festival for two days over the course of the Father's Day weekend and participating in the Pride Parade on Sunday. At 11 o'clock is Step Off. And I'm excited this year because, though we've had a partnership from City of Milwaukee all the way through and others, this time we have three or three to five cities with their electeds and their employees joining us. It's going to be a big contingent. We have at least 50 people that have signed up to march, and we have several law enforcement cars and a fire truck this year, so it should be just a blast. Today, we brought to you a presentation, a little video, short video presentation that I want to share with everybody, and I want to invite folks from the public to come down to the festival and find our booth and see us in the parade. And if there are any employees out there looking, watching this, or sitting in the audience who have any time on the weekend, we can still use some help with volunteers at the booth. So, if you just go on the website, you can find that and sign up to help us out for just an hour at the booth because we're a little short on volunteers. So with that, let's go ahead with the video.
Clackamas County has participated in the Pride Northwest Festival since 2015 to celebrate and support our lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender communities. Commissioners and employees, along with family and supporters, march in the parade and host a booth.
Well, it's important so we can demonstrate our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion in Clackamas County and communicate to our partners throughout the region that we're a place of quality employment. We want people to think about Clackamas County as being a place where people can work, play, and do good things together, and that we respect one another and we hold each other with high integrity.
I think it's been a long time coming where we need to be respectful of people who love one another, no matter who they are. And if they choose to spend their life together and they choose to be committed to one another, then we need to honor that as people who value all of our folks in Clackamas County.
Find out more about how we are making Clackamas County a welcoming and inclusive place for all at clackamas.us/diversity and learn more about our participation in the Pride Northwest Festival at bit.ly/clackopride.
So, thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, great job. Martha?
Yeah.
No one asked us to be on that video.
I was just in the right place at the right time, just saying.
Come on down, you'll be in the next one.
But I did want to say, I would like to help out at the booth sometime on Saturday, if possible. I cannot make the parade the next day because I have folks from out of town coming in, but... So if you could put me down for a slot in the morning, I'd sure appreciate that.
That's great, I will do that.
Just the whole day works out for Martha.
Oh, there you go.
All day Saturday.
I got the lobster feed that night with Lake Olsalk. Got to be multiple places.
Great, all right. All right, so, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
It is a lot of fun. Do we know where we're meeting?
Yes, we'll make sure you all have the itinerary and location. We are number 85, I think, in the group in the parade?
I think so, 885. Yeah, there was a last-minute change, and I don't have my email with me right now, but there was an email that went out, so we'll make sure that you get copied on that. And it's down on Everett and...
And Eighth.
And Eighth, I think, yeah.
So the best way to get there is probably the orange line.
Yep.
Because parking is minimal.
Parking is impossible, and walking into our Step Off Point is important. You end up at the festival, so please go in and say hi to the folks at the booth if you're walking in the parade. And Don gets the prize, he's been in the parade every year since he came here.
So have I, I think.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Well, first up is Citizen Communication, and we have Larry Mosley and Al... Al, I'm just going to...
Notts.
Oh, yeah, Al, please come up. Have a seat.
Yeah.
Yeah, both of you guys, come on up. And we'll start with Larry. Give us your name and where you live. You don't have to give us the address, just the general.
Well, I couldn't, you guys can drop money off. Larry Mosley, the veterans of foreign wars, but I am also the charter rep for Boy Scout Troop 220, which is celebrating 100 years of service to Oregon City and Clackamas County on the 23rd, and I wanted to, if I could, present each commissioner a personal request.
Can I just go quick? If that's okay? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Why am I not surprised, Larry?
Well, yep, I remembered, Larry. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You asked me sometime ago for a copy of my...
Yes, oh.
And I brought it, and it's personally signed by the office.
Thank you, Larry.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you, Larry.
So it's... Everybody's invited. It's the 23rd. Everyone is invited. It's on Saturday, the 23rd, at the VFW Hall, and what's nice is it's also Heritage Day, so the museum's going to be open, and they're going to have some of our exhibits, and we have some at the post. And at 1:00 and 4:00, they're having a special presentation. At the 1:00, Mark Meek is going to be singing. I don't know whether he'll make it for the second one. It's going to be a lot of fun. Unfortunately, I am taking my granddaughter to a trip for Alaska because of her good grade, so I won't be there, but if you all could be there, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Al.
Okay. I'm sorry, my name is Al Notts. I live out in Mollala, Oregon, off of Bernard's Road. I'd like to address my concern over the destruction of our prime farmland and disrespect for me and my neighbors. On Bernard's Road in Mollala, there's a 300,000 square foot of industrial marijuana buildings being built. There's a six-foot-high dirt berm used for a firing range, which the county now is starting to shut down. We need a yearly inspection on these facilities, paid for by the growers, so the taxpayers of Clackamas County don't have to pay for the regulating them. Growing marijuana on a private easement is a violation. Why are the neighbors allowed to grow it again this year? Last year, it proved to be not hemp, but marijuana. Also, I'd like to compliment Andrea Hall on her diligence from code enforcement. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We also have concerns about... We have budgeted 1.2 million, is that correct, Don? With the Sheriff's Department, code enforcement, H3S, to try to address some of these issues. We're also talking about a business license, which might... Well, we're barely talking about it, but something I've been interested in, which might give us the opportunity to do some inspections. We really haven't got into that. You know, the big mistake about marijuana is that they made it a crop, and that was, to me, the biggest mistake they ever made, which means that you can grow it anywhere, that you can grow crops, and that's a big challenge. But that particular one, I think I remember somebody last year sending me a photo of that, and we... Somebody did... Oh, you probably did. We did some... Somebody did some testing and found out that it was, in fact, the THC was too high.
Oh, the THC was too high on the field, yes.
Yeah.
And there was 20 other fields in Oregon that tested too high.
Yeah.
And what my concern was is the THC level was .66, and according to the State Agriculture Department, .35 is considered marijuana. And the hemp, which turned out to be marijuana, can be grown anyplace, like corn or anything, you know, next to schools or anything, and out in the open and stuff, because it isn't an agricultural crop.
So when they determined it was marijuana, what did they do?
They put an embargo on it, and they put some signs out there, and then it took three to four weeks for them to destroy it. So what they did is they took a tractor and took all the plastic, the piping, and all the sheeting, three acres of it, piled it up into six big piles, and the Department of Agriculture said, "Well, it's a compost pile now." So then they let it sit for quite a while, and the guy wanted to burn it. My neighbor has... He's 90 years old, and his wife's on oxygen. I complained about that. I said, "Hey, you can't be burning this stuff right next to his house." So, but anyways, and then he wanted to bury it, so, no, well, you know, he can bury it if he wants to. So here, a few weeks ago now that he wants to plant his other crop, he took a bulldozer and piled it up against my property line and around the corner of my property line in a big berm, so we got plastic, mud, and marijuana all piled up on the corner of my property in his car. That's what he did.
He's saying, "Thank you."
Yeah, oh, yeah, he's a real nice guy. Yeah, and now the state says, "Oh, yeah, you can grow it again. Do it all over again."
Yeah.
And the neighbors don't want him to do it, you know. It just shows me that it's disrespect for the community. And what my complaint is, is it's marijuana. It turned out to be marijuana, and the county has the right to not have him grow it on there, because it's on a private easement. Period. That's it. You know, it might be, you know, you can grow it, but you don't know what it is when you're growing it.
Yeah, I don't remember the easement issue, but I'll take a look.
Yeah, well, the easement issue is that everybody on the easement has to approve a person growing marijuana.
But not if it's hemp.
In fact, we had that issue because he was growing it illegally in his shop the year before.
Yeah, I remember this.
Yeah.
All right, well, I appreciate you coming in, and I'll take a look at it.
Okay, yeah, and on the permit thing, DeShues County has their marijuana growers every year, you know, have a permit, have them come in and have inspections, and they have the marijuana growers pay for the inspections and stuff, and not the taxpayers at Clackamas County. That's the way I feel.
I see Ken writing it down, he'll probably look into that. We have similar concerns.
Yeah, if you would kind of look at DeShues County and see what their limitations are, you know. On a 40-acre plot, they have 10,000 square foot only.
Yeah, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Les, you're up.
A little card from him, please. Almost done, just a second.
Morning.
Good morning, Les Poole. I live here in Clackamas County, the marijuana capital of Oregon, almost. It's Jackson. Yeah, we're fortunately not in first place there. And as I sat there listening to that, I thought about something I shared several months ago. I mentioned how the voters were told that marijuana would be a discreet issue, and as the chair just said, folks thought they were voting for the ability to use marijuana, someone could grow up to four plants or whatever it was. And as soon as the law was passed, administrative rules, which is... Who's really running Oregon most of the time, the Administrative Rule Department decided that it was a farm crop, and people had the right to farm it. Now, when I brought that example up several months ago, I equated it to what also occurred recently in Salem. 2017, transportation issue. How are we going to fix the freeways? Well, let's look at tolling. We can't add capacity to 205, we don't have it in our budget. Let's look at tolling. What do you think came out of that legislature? Did we get a clear directive that we would do tolling and increase the capacity in accordance with federal law? No, what we got was a completely different recommendation. The citizens look at that as bait and switch, and they're really tired of it. I think I'm speaking for a lot of folks, and I think I'm speaking for you. So, when I look at the tolling issue, when I look at the conditions of our roads, and then I hear that we're having to spend more and more money elsewhere, it's really troubling. It really is. Because the roads have been ignored, and frankly, I believe, just taken for granted, we do it, we take things for granted, they're always there, and because of that, so much money and focus has gone elsewhere that now we're sacrificing the travel lanes for transit, light rail, parking, and a variety of other purposes. That's not what we were promised. Metro and Trimeste promised congestion relief. They get money for light rail projects for removing cars from the road. At the same time, they're taking the road right-ofways, taking lanes for transit purposes. That is not acceptable. I'm not speaking against light rail here, I'm speaking against creating congestion, creating all kinds of problems, disrupting the economy, under the guise of creating a situation where we're going to have fewer cars on the road. It's very impractical. I and some other citizens are taking some action, and you'll all be hearing very soon. It's a very simple concept. We're going to have a countywide initiative, and I'll be presenting it to the county. It's a ballot question, and it polls very well, and it goes like this. Shall a public vote be conducted prior to converting existing traffic lanes for other purposes in Clackamas County? And I think this answer from the citizens will be yes. We have got to increase our road capacity, take care of our roads, and not get so preoccupied with every other thing we're doing transportation-wise in this metro region, so that, in the end, we failed, and what we're doing is failing. And I don't hold the county responsible for it, but because we're at ground zero, where all the growth is occurring, where all the pressures are, and because, once again, our transportation infrastructure has been ignored, that's why we're taking this action. I'm over my time, I would just like to say one last thing, and that is, can anyone tell me how they're going to completely rebuild where 84 and I-5 come together down by the Rose Quarter and not divert tens of thousands of cars onto 205?
Not possible.
Wow.
Not possible.
So, we need to take care of our roads. This isn't an anti-Trimeste rant, but this is a statement of something that the citizens will be doing, and I'm very confident that it will make the ballot next year. So, keep your eyes open on that, and folks that are watching, I mentioned last week, we put up a Facebook page, it's pretty simple now, but obviously, there'll be much more content, and it's the Vehicle Transportation Alliance, and we're covering tolling and transportation issues. So, thank you for your time, as always, and I do appreciate your letting me go way over my three minutes. Thank you, Ken.
Yeah, I want to defend our Transportation Department a little bit. I think that your comments, respectfully, were a bit misleading. The Transportation Department has spent millions of dollars during the course of the previous years, and actually, Mr. Krupp and the previous board came up with an additional $5 million to do road paving and other maintenance work on our county.
$500,000, Ken.
Was it $500,000?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry about that. To do additional road paving, but the state constitution is pretty specific about where funds come from for roads, and it comes from the gas tax and registration tax. And even with all the money that was spent by the Transportation Department on roads in Clackamas County, we were $17 million a year short. We're about $300 million a year behind the eight ball as we speak, and until we get more revenue, we will remain behind the eight ball on this. The state has allowed us $3 million this year, increasing over the next 10 years to $13 million from the state funds. That being said, we will still be underfunded for roads until or unless we get other source of funding that's constitutionally permissible, which either means a higher gas tax or a higher vehicle registration fee, because we can't take property taxes and build roads, as an example. It's simply not allowed by the state constitution. So, that is where we sit financially on the issue. Now, with respect to the freeway, the county doesn't have a voice, legally speaking, politically we do, but legally speaking, on how the state goes forward to fund the freeways. And raising expectations that somehow we're going to be able to solve this problem without additional revenues is just disingenuous to the public. So, I just believe that the public needs to understand precisely where we sit on these issues, and I know that Commissioner Savis could probably speak to it at even more greater detail and depth than I can, but those are your basic numbers, facts, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I think Paul may be planning on speaking on that issue.
Well, so, even last night, in front of a crowd with ODOT presenting on the tolling issue, a lot of issues come up, and I think it's probably... I'll be a little bit more sympathetic to the people out there that are traveling every day and paying their gas tax when they buy their gasoline at the pump station, that, you know, that's not easily understood how transportation funding is done in the state and how transportation dollars are spent and how transportation decisions are spent. And one would think that they all should be in alignment, but they're not. And how this region makes decisions on transportation is not very simple, and it's not very, in many ways, logical, how we do that. And thus, we have an undersized system, and we don't have a lot of dollars going where people think it makes sense, and they're probably right on where those dollars ought to go, but that's not how the decisions are made, and we don't have a lot of... We have a voice, but we don't have a decision, oddly enough, and that shouldn't be. And the ODOT, in this case, as far as the tolling, was told what to do. They didn't decide to do it. They were told what to do by the legislature in House Bill 2017. So, and that's just one sliver of this very complex pie of decisions and processes and governments, and so I don't fault the citizens for not understanding. The situation is not very comprehensive, and I can't justify... I can explain what it is, but I can't justify why it is what it is. I think there's a big distinction between the two.
Yeah.
And I've been speaking of that issue for a long time, so, you know, until the regional decisions are made for the region's benefit, until that happens, we're going to be in a defensive position.
I'd just like to add one thing. I always look at things in a positive way, and it's nice to see all those people going to work, and that's kind of how I see it. I mean, you could see the difference, people going to work. You could count the trucks. So in that way, I see it as a positive now. With full employment, we need to figure out how to get people to work easier. I hate sitting in traffic, believe me. I don't even like to drive to Portland anymore.
None of us do.
There was a time when you liked it.
There was a time when I used to like driving I-5 and 205, but not so much anymore. Anyway, thank you very much, and we'll move on to the next issue, which is a public hearing. Don?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have a public hearing to consider a resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than 10% and a budget reduction for fiscal year 2017 and 2018. We have our budget manager, Diane Padilla, here to present this item to you.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm here to request some year-end adjustments to spending categories requested by the departments in keeping with legally accurate budget. The tool we're using is a supplemental budget of greater than 10% that allows you to make those changes. It requires a public notice being published, and that was done in the Lake Oswego Review on June 7th. I have just three items. The Business and Economic Development Fund would like to reduce materials and services and increase special payments for economic development projects in the amount of $500,000. The Happy Valley Clackamas Joint Transportation Fund is reducing contingency and budgeting for additional special payments to local governments in the amount of $1,600,000. And finally, the Clackamas Broadband Utility Fund is recognizing additional connection fee revenue and budgeting for related program costs. The effect of all these three changes is an increase of $300,000 to the total county budget, and with that, I respectfully request your approval of this supplemental budget.
Any questions to the commission? All right, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. I thought you were going to get up, Les. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the resolution for Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than 10% and budget reduction for fiscal year 2017, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve a resolution for Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than 10% and budget reduction for fiscal year 2017, 2018. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing not, motion carries unanimously. The next item is a public discussion item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm going to indulge you for a quick moment here. I have a request from the Director of Health, Housing, and Human Services that the Board of County Commissioners convene itself as the Board of Local Public Health, and I don't know precisely whether we have a legal protocol with respect to that, because it wasn't exactly noticed that way, but the request to be serving as the local Board of Public Health seems to be an appropriate request, given the content of this next item. If you're not able to legally do that, then maybe you can do that in spirit, but this item is to consider approval for the blueprint for a healthy... But this item is to consider approval for the blueprint for a healthy Clackamas County plan. And we have Don Emmerich with our Health, Housing and Human Services Department here to present this item to you.
So I heard you asked a legal question. Would we look at Stephen over there and ask him?
Recede as the Board and convene as the Board of Health.
Okay. So with that, I will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and reconvene as the Board of Public Health. And welcome.
Hi, good morning. This is on, right? Yes. Okay. Good morning, everyone. So, this has been a long time waiting. We've been in front of you many, many, many times to talk about the blueprint, keeping you up to date on everything that we've been doing, the community engagement piece, the priority piece. And so today is the day that we hope to get your approval. I'm Don Emmerich, Director of Public Health under H3S. And before I start, I want to show a quick video. So if we could look at the video, please. You know, I really, really, really love this video. So the first thing, before we even move on, I'd love to get your reaction. Have you ever seen this before?
Yes.
I saw it recently.
Okay.
I was just in those areas.
Never seen it. So what is your reaction when you first saw that? And even today, when you've seen it for the first time, what is your first reaction when you watch that?
It's standing way too close to a train.
Okay.
Tell you that right now.
Yep.
It's contamination.
Contamination.
Just the food exposure.
Well, it's the first time I've seen it where the train wasn't flying through.
Flying through, right.
Yeah. But, I mean, I noticed the food actually under the train as it went by.
Yeah. I love that video because I feel like it's just the perfect metaphor for why public health is really important. And oftentimes, when, I've been showing this video forever, and oftentimes, what we hear is, you know, people say they want to go in and they want to fix it, right? Or, oh my gosh, what is, why is this happening or why is that happening? And then, why is transportation going through a community? This is, that video is the reason why I think public health is really important. Government, local government, public health is really important because we can really serve as the convener. It's a very complex situation. And there, you can find a lot of wrongs about it, but there's a lot of assets and positives about that as well. And so, if we do not do the community engagement that is necessary to work with such complex issues, we could really disrupt an ecosystem in that neighborhood that, for the most part, they really feel like it's working. When that train left, everyone went back to business. You know, these are small businesses that are there that are trying to thrive. This is a transportation system that is somewhat working. One thing that usually gets missed in that video is that there is an economic component to that, too, because tourists are coming from all over to come and see that train. It goes through four times a day. And they're coming to see that train, and they're spending money. And so to go in there thinking that government or other people can go in there and fix the wrong, you could actually disrupt. And so, it's a very complex but great metaphor to where the blueprint really serves as a great way of finding solutions, engaging the community on complex issues. And so I really thought that that was a great way to kind of tee this up. So, thank you, everyone, again, for your support and your patience around this process. This community engagement and blueprint work is very hard. It takes a lot of time. The community engagement piece takes a long time. And what's the saying? If it's easy, everybody would do it. I think we found that not a lot of people do this type of engagement that we just experienced over the last year and a half. So we're very, very proud of it. So, again, if we look at, I'm not going to go through the full presentation. You've seen this already. What you also have in your packet, and Commissioner Fisher, you had asked me the last time that we were here, you had asked for the detail of the blueprint. And actually, I failed because you actually had that. It was in your packet, and I just forgot to mention that to you. You do have that in your packet now. So, that's why we're not going to go through the detail in the presentation. It is in your packet where you actually see all the tasks associated with the goals and the strategies that the community came up with. So, as you know, I've mentioned this to you so many times, that we are a nationally accredited local public health department. That is a rare honor across the country, and so one that we should be very, very proud that you have an accredited public health organization. I think this is also another really great slide. This goes back to the video. When we look at health of a county, oftentimes, we think clinical. We think people need insurance. They need access to clinical care. They need a primary care provider. This is research-based that really actually shows you that having access to care and having insurance actually only contributes 10% of a person's health. 10%. But that's where all the money goes. That's where we put a lot of our money, is into the clinical services and access. It only actually contributes 10% to a person's health. Healthy behaviors, the lifestyle choices, cigarette smoking, smoking during pregnancy, physical inactivity, 40% of a person's health. So, all of those prevention work that public health does and a lot of the community-based organizations do, healthy behaviors contributes 40% to a person's health. Socioeconomic factors, so now we're getting into social determinants of health. That's another 40% that contributes to a person's health. And then finally, the physical environment, 10% of a person's total health and well-being. Over here on the left-hand side, you see where Clackamas County ranks. So this is a ranking system that the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation put out with the University of Wisconsin called the County Health Rankings. And down on that left-hand side, you can see, in 2014, the overall scoring of those four things that I just went through came to where Clackamas was ranked fifth in the state as the healthyest. We were the fifth healthiest county in the state. So I'm going to just focus on those numbers for a second. In 2015, we were still number five. In 2016, we jumped to number two. We were the second healthiest county in the state. In '17, we stayed at two. And then, just this past year, or this current year that we're in right now, we dropped to number three. That's great. So I want to kind of focus on the numbers that are in the parentheses now. Those numbers that are in the parentheses is the score that we scored out of all the counties for that last bubble, that physical environment piece. That physical environment bubble is what is bringing us down and not allowing us to be number one. So in 2014, even though we were the fifth healthiest county, we were ranked 25th in our physical environment. And look at what is in our physical environment: lead poison, housing built before 1950, nitrate levels in our water, and then air quality. These are all public health responsibilities. And in the county, we ranked 25th in '14. In 2015, we were 29th. Look at those numbers. That is not the direction that we should be going in. Even though we score high overall, those numbers in the physical environment are not where we need to be. So go back to the video that we just talked about, right? So there was a lot of physical environment work that was there. And this is the reason why public health is so important and the engagement of getting our community involved in this. We can't do it ourselves, so having all of those people that are involved in this process to help us get there, my goal is to make sure that we are not 39th anymore. I want us to be number one, and I want that 39 to be up to 15 or 10. And we can do that if we work cross-sector and we look at the complex issues and we continue to engage our community and allow them to be a part of the solution. So our foundational programs, you all know this. I mean, this is the work that we do, access to care and so forth, foundational programs, foundational capabilities. That's the work that the County Health Department does. So, we are here for the blueprint. The blueprint is the video that we just showed. And everything that's in the blueprint are all the solutions that the engagement process allowed us to do. It is for the people, by the people, and the voice of the people. So the blueprint started out as a community needs assessment back in 2017. That data then created priorities. The priorities actually were facilitated through this community engagement process. Seventy-two presentations, over a thousand surveys, 14 focus groups, and over 269 blueprint subcommittee participants. As you can see underneath that blue ribbon, all of the organizations that we engaged that had a voice about this process across the county. And then, of course, the population served. Just because you hit the organizations does not necessarily mean you have the representation of the people. And the population served, as you can see, is very inclusive, very diverse. And so that's the Clackamas way. The role of you, the Board of County Commissioners, you are acting as the Board of Health right now. Certainly do appreciate that. And so your role is to help us make this policy. And the County Board of Health shall adopt rules necessary to carry out these policies, which is what we're asking you to do today. The County Board of Health shall not adopt a rule or policy that is inconsistent or less strict than any other public health law or rule, the OHA. And then, your job is also to adopt schedule of fees and public health services, which we are not asking for today, but in the future, we probably will. So that just is good for you to know. And then our Advisory Board, we have many advisory committee members here today that were just instrumental in this. They were right with us along the way and have approved this several months ago. So as you may recall, this blueprint is very strategic. It is intended to ensure that we are meeting the needs of the community and that we're not just throwing stuff on the wall and seeing what sticks. So we have three priority areas: access to healthcare and human services, culture of health, and then, healthy behaviors. This blueprint is set up, again, very strategic. Every one of those three priorities have goals, objectives, strategies. And then there are many tactics that actually show you how we're going to meet all of these goals and objectives. It is the role of the Health Department, of the Clackamas County Health Department, to assure that this strategic plan is being implemented by the community and to really manage this process. Some of it we are doing because we have state mandates. But this is really an opportunity to build capacity in our county to allow those community-based organizations and those other non-governmental organizations to help us find these solutions and to implement. It is a life-course approach. So the strategies and the tactics that were created goes from prenatal all the way up to older adults. We often call it the womb to tomb or cradle to grave. We also have trauma-informed approaches. So we will be asking those community-based organizations who will be helping us implement these strategies through a grant process will be asked to address trauma-informed approaches into their grant application, as well as the life course. And then finally, equity, equity, equity. One of the greatest outcomes that came out of this process is really understanding the nuances, the health disparities and the inequities that are located throughout our county. We know that people in, the needs of West Lynn is not the same as Oregon Trail. And so therefore, we should address all of our services, all of our grant applications. We should be really addressing those needs that surfaced out of this process. Again, this is just another visual to kind of show you how it all came to be. There's the needs assessment, the Clackamas County blueprint, and then those subcommittees that we had such tremendous participation from the community on. And then these are wonderful, wonderful lists. And we may have missed a few, but this is a great representation of the commitment and the collaboration that we had out into the community. And then finally, the next steps is, we're going to be asking people to come up and talk about the blueprint and their experience and sort of why they're going to ask you for this adoption. And then, as you may recall, this is something that I talked about before. We will have a website. We are engaged in a vendor that will have this website that is very transparent. All of the implementation of the blueprint will be on this website, so everyone will be able to see it. It's transparent. It's interactive. And everyone will be able to follow and watch the progress of implementation. So, with that said, I'll open up for any questions, and then we'll have our guests come up and speak.
I was going to say that it's a good thing we're convened as the Board of Public Health because your enthusiasm is infectious.
That was a good one, Jim.
There are 3,007 counties, in case somebody wants to know, our ranking amongst you. I assume you meant all counties.
No, that was just for the state.
Oh, there's, oh, we're thirty, well, we're the last in the state? That's terrible. I thought we, I was excited. Okay.
Yeah, so we have a lot of work to do in that physical environment piece, that water quality and air quality work. And that's why the blueprint's so important, because it does bring all of this together. And we have arrows pointing straight versus all the arrows going this way, which is the way that I feel sometimes we work. But the blueprint is a way of getting everyone together in the same direction. And then with the grant funding that we have, now we're trying to fund those organizations to help advance, so we don't have a static or a sitting plan that just accumulates dust.
Okay. Thanks, Paul.
So, just to make sure my comments are relevant, I want to make sure what we're doing here is different today than we did a couple, three weeks ago when you made your presentation. So, I have a number of comments. So first of all, we're formally adopting the plan, right? There's no argument there, right?
Oh, I don't know. Is there? I don't know. I hope not.
I assume so.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, from the meeting we had here a couple of months ago with the superintendents, when we talked about access, and which came up again at a forum we had across the DSB in the auditorium, something that came up since then, a lot of discussion around all the things that you talked about in so many connected ways, and that is transportation access. You know, you had the map of the county there. I saw Colton was a different shade than the Estacate area and the Malala area and the 213 corridor. So transportation's a factor. But what's also come up since then is our hours of service. So what are our hours of service for people to get healthcare or mental health care or access to our clinics? What is our hours of service?
So, Rich, I'm going to have to ask you to answer that. I'm not sure what behavioral health clinic hours or health clinic hours are.
I guess I mean also mental health as well, because that was one of the things that was key in the meeting with the superintendents, with the schools. And of course, particularly, access for children in particular.
Richard Swift, I'm the Director of Health, Housing and Human Services. So in terms of hours of access, I think when you're looking at healthcare across the county, actually, that involves a multiplicity of partners. So you're talking Providence, Kaiser, our own crisis clinic. So in that sense, you know, the access for healthcare is 24/7. You know, I think the access is outstanding. When you start looking at, when you take that pie and you cut it up and drill down a little bit, and you start moving into community mental health, then the access gets a little tougher. Because there, the crisis, we do 24/7. However, our first crisis, once we are closed for the day, is going to be by phone. And then we can deploy a crisis team as needed. So it's not going to be that you have the same type of ED access that you have across the county for behavioral health. And in terms of crisis response. So, and that also involves our partnerships across the county with law enforcement and also fire and ambulance.
I don't particularly mean crisis. I just mean, you know, just access to healthcare, non-crisis. Do realize we have 20. Well, I don't know. I'm just asking.
I mean, county facilities are open Monday through Friday. And then our, we do have dental on Saturdays. And so actually, our access is, I think, excellent. you know, dental on Saturdays, and so actually our access is, I think, excellent.
My question is, is there an opportunity, when we talked with, especially on the mental health part, because what I drew out of that meeting with the superintendents were is that of the three counties, we have availability for more mental health care, but we certainly weren't using it, right? And that access was brought up. So my question is, what are we doing? Why are we different? Why are we ranking so low in accessing that mental health care, for instance? Is it ours? Is it really solely transportation? Because what was brought back to me recently was, well, you know, you guys are closed. So I don't know if that's closed on the weekends or whatnot, and I know no one's open 24 hours, and some of these things fall under the needs of crisis. So I was curious as to why we think we're not ranking as high as the other counties.
I'm not really sure if I have all the answers, but what I can tell you is in the blueprint, under the access for care and human services, there is a recommendation underneath that. Those are the details that you have. There is a recommendation for that to be explored. So that is a recommendation to pull all of those providers together and to identify what is the problem. That is one of the recommendations. That's why this is so great, because it's there. Now, perhaps, when we figure out, you know, what those grants and the RFP looks like, perhaps that's an RFP that goes out to says, hey, we need to create a task force to actually study this problem and then get this resolved. So that's, I think, you know, just kind of getting back up here at the bigger picture. That's why the blueprint's really important, because it really does say, here are the gaps that we found. So everything that was talked about in the superintendent's meeting, we sort of already knew. In fact, the young lady who did that presentation was the chair of the Access to Care and Human Services Subcommittee for our blueprint. So there's the connection right there. So she was just articulating what the group had already been discovered. We put it into the blueprint, so we know that that is an issue that needs to be explored. And then perhaps this money that we have that's going to go out into these grants, maybe that funds that. It either funds the solution or it funds additional exploration.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what I can use today as a commissioner to help out there in whether it's transportation or whether it's, whatever it may be, how to, if we see, you know, a path, if there's something you've identified right now in advance of this without going through a laborious process, we can actually, what can we plug in today?
Yeah, it's a systems issue, right? I mean, that's really what we're talking about, a referral and a systems issue, and that's not something that you can solve in a program. It's a very different complexity to this. So it does take a little bit more time. I know no one likes that, but when you're talking about changing systems, it's not an overnight fix, and it's not a program. Programs easy, you can fund a program and get, but that's not what this is. This is a system that's broken that we have to fix.
And I guess the linkage between access and transportation, I guess, really, the challenges are the same. I don't think people understand your response and nor they understand my response when it comes to transportation funding. We just, it seems, everything is so complicated, and I think the public has a hard time relating to that. They think that they can get an answer or get a fix right now or understand how we work, and we are somewhat siloed by our state structure and our county structure and local government structure that we have all of these departments and all these things, whether it's transportation or healthcare or whatever it is. Land use is just very complex.
So again, we go back to the video. There was clearly a transportation issue there, right? And so we're dealing with transportation issues here, and so public health will help be that convener. I think you're going to hear from transportation as one of our public comments that will come up, and so Joe may actually even address some of your concerns, too.
Maybe there ought to be an initiative on streamlining some of our challenges we have out there in departments.
Yeah.
The, I think, you know, the transportation and access to healthcare is a salient point. You know, what you have in Clackamas, we do not have the same sort of distributed system as Multnomah County has in terms of people's access to care quickly. Geographically, our dispersion's different. We do not have some of the infrastructure that is north of us. We do not have a unity here in the county in terms of psychiatric response, so you have extensive travel times for people who are seeking that type of care. And then also, we don't have simply a dispensary clinic in terms of methadone, medically assisted therapy. We don't have anything like that here in Clackamas.
Isn't there one on McGlaughlin Boulevard, a methadone clinic?
A small one, and it's not one that's affiliated with any or plugged into any sort of our services. I don't know much about them. So we, and so that makes it difficult. You have extensive, extensive, expensive travel times for folks who are, you know, seeking that type of medical assistance. And so what that does is it impacts our scores as relates to the health of the county. And then also, not to be forgotten, is, you know, air and water quality is, you know, also a serious matter. You know, we've seen that in Wilsonville, we've seen that in Salem, in terms of the water quality of Lamont and what they're pulling. So it's all intertwined, and we got a lot of work in front of us. And Dawn and her staff have done a fantastic job in terms of this blueprint and the community involvement.
All right, Ken.
Thank you. In watching your PowerPoint, two things came to mind. One is, you indicated where 39th is a result of the environmental issues, which there was water, housing, air, and a fourth, I don't recall what it was.
It was lead.
I am curious as to which one of those, or is it all three? Or which one is the biggest contributor to that factor? And related to that is it's not in your blueprint. There was three things in your blueprint, and none of them addressed the environmental issue.
So it's the physical environment, so we're getting into wordsmithing here a little bit. However, air quality is not in the blueprint because that is a charge that our public health authority is responsible for. So that is what we get money from the state to handle, and so we work with our folks, but that is a charge that is the public health authority's charge. So it wouldn't be in the blueprint because then that would be redundant, right? We wanted to ensure that the things, and remember that the blueprint came from the voice of the people. So if the voice of the people did not necessarily say that that was a concern for them, then that's something that we weighed heavily in what made the final cut.
Okay. Fair statement. Do you happen to know, though, which environmental issue was the most?
I can find that out for you. I don't know, we get the data, you can pull this data down off of the website where you can actually see some of that information, and so I can have my epidemiologist pull that and get back to you on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So one of the reasons I was confused about our placement is there's only 36 counties in the state of Oregon. How could we possibly be 39? So I thought you were talking about the 3,000 counties.
Sorry about that. No, it's 36, that's a...
Okay, all right, that helps. Sonia?
I created new counties when I was doing this.
Yes, I was confused about that, too. I appreciate you bringing to my attention that this report actually dials down to show some of the differences within the equity zone, since there's so much disparity within the whole, like in North Clackamas School District, there's great disparity between Happy Valley and parts of Milwaukee and unincorporated Clackamas County. And this does a great job, that's in the report, of showing the darker colors of the green to the light green and the different variations. But I'm confused about, in Estacada, that is the highest area of the percentage of children on Medicaid at 44%, yet the color of it is the lowest from, it says, percent of children on Medicaid, and this is on page 25, is from 0 to 3.5. And so I was able to track all the other graphs and understand them, but I could not, this one doesn't, I don't understand this one.
And I don't have, fortunately, I don't have it in front of me, so... Should I bring it to me? Still don't know if I'll be able to answer it, but I'll certainly look.
It sounds like we have to email almost another work session. Question for Dawn.
Okay, so it doesn't appear that we have an answer. I just want to make sure if there's any errors, that if we approve it today, that we just correct them.
Yep, you bet.
And Paul, you had a question?
I was just asking Mr. Krupp if maybe there's any lack of clarity here, that we have another work session on it, I don't know. I mean, I'm ready to move, but I'm just, we just have questions, maybe there should be a follow-up. Proceed forward today, but follow-up.
We can certainly do a follow-up. If we're able to move forward today and then follow up with any additional questions at a subsequent work session, we can do.
I'm ready to move forward. I just think that, I think we need to, I understand the voice of the people, but there's also how we practically are effective. You know, I think it goes back to MFR, Management for Results, how do we actually affect change? And I think when people approach us and ask us how we solve problems, I think we have to have a really clear, tangible answer on how we get from point A to point B.
So the blueprint actually triangulates a lot of that. So the first step was the assessment, which is all of the data that we collected that actually helps drive sort of what the, it's the data that identifies what the true needs are out in the community. When we went out into the community and did all those roadshows, we presented that data to the community and said, does this resonate with you? Is this what's really happening in your community? And if not, tell us what is. So it was a way to validate the data, to ensure that we had the appropriate, that it was reflecting the appropriate need. Sometimes the community doesn't know what they don't know, and so that's the way that we, it's a triangulation process in which public health works, is you have the data, you have the voice of the community, and then you have the analysis. And then you try to find what's that sweet spot in the middle that we can reflect what the community needs but also validate it with the data. What you have in front of you is all of that. So most times, because people don't want to take, organizations don't want to take the time to do the engagement process, they just use the data and say, here's the needs, let's go do something. That is not what we wanted to do, it's not authentic, and it doesn't necessarily validate to what the community says, because we also want them to get behind it. So we can say this is what the needs are, but then if they don't buy into it, then we won't get anything done. And so this is an opportunity, that's why we have people here that want to come up and talk, because they know that this is something that they can get behind. It's something that they see, and the data actually validates it as well. And so Commissioner Fisher, I definitely will get back with you on that. I know that there's clearly an explanation that I just don't know, because I'm not the smart one up here.
You're pretty smart.
The epidemiologists that are the smart people. So I think that, I mean, certainly, you know, Commissioner Savas, we want to be able to make you feel comfortable with this, but I'm pretty confident that we've done the right work, that you can feel confident the implementation is going to occur.
Yeah, I don't question your work, so don't get me wrong. I mean, it's just really about how we become effective as a county or as government, you know. You know, that water, for example, just taking the water issue, the recent water issue with Salem and Wilsonville, for example. And I know that the water districts take quite a bit of pride in what they do, but sometimes the water quality is not a matter of what the water district supplies to the household, is what's in the household from the street to the property, right? And that's where sometimes that lead becomes a factor, or appliances, or fixtures within the household. So it's something that, if we're going to be effective, I think partnering with those agencies, water, transportation, so forth, and how we partner together. So we are most effective with the citizens' dollars, and I guess that's really what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I could probably come back and talk another two hours.
Sure, I know we could. I'm just confident of that.
Everybody okay with staying another couple hours? Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think I might have answered my own question about the, because it might not be the population, and so you did answer my question that I had about approving the plan. So I don't have any questions moving forward, but I do think that the work that was done to come up with this plan was incredibly important. I had the privilege of being part of one of the community groups that got to take the dots and put them on the priorities and do the community engagement. It was really wonderful. I think as a board, it's very important that we stay on top of this, that we work with and are updated. It goes, aligns so well with what we're looking at with disparities and looking at focusing resources on disadvantaged areas. We are working hand in hand with what our values and priorities are, and just hats off to everyone that's been involved with this. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
Well, I think it's interesting, we'll, of course, have the public here in a second, but we have a couple of opportunities to actually have an impact. And one is that in our small grant program, that we try and focus our investments in those areas, that's one of them. The other is, recently, it seems rather odd, but in the Island Station neighborhood, the diesel trains stop and idle for hours. And you would think the railroad, the small railroad, would pay for that to update those to cleaner diesel filtration or whatever they do. Not being a diesel mechanic, I don't know that. But, you know, and the legislature, a legislator came to us and asked, could we help fund that? And I believe we agreed to do that.
We did.
But Lake Oswego did not, and they're part of the county, and it's not a lot of money. But, you know, the impact on them, since we're 36th in the state, is also great. I mean, if air quality is one of those issues, the impact, it's not like the air just drops to the ground and cleans up and goes to Lake Oswego, you know? So the problem is county-wide, and we need to address that. But anyway, I think the small grant program is something that we can actually take this data, take. I was also involved in the community group stuff, and they were really excited. It was fun. Paul and I were both there that day. It was a lot of fun, and the expertise was amazing. So anyway, I guess we should move forward, since I have some cards here. We're going to be here all day. Ken has a 12 o'clock meeting.
We'll ask people to keep it.
We will open the public, wait, no, that's open the, announce that the discussion item, that's a discussion item, and anyone who would like to speak on this matter. I have Michael Foley and Linda Eastland. Come on up. Well, Michael, you'll be up first, and just tell us your name and generally where you're from, and thank you for coming today.
Hi, yeah, I'm Mike Foley. I'm listed as a community advocate, volunteer, and I live in unincorporated Clackamas County since 1985. That sounds very rural, but it's not. I think Gladstone City Limits are two blocks from my home, and Milwaukee's about five. And I've been a volunteer for the county for many years in many different situations. Two and a half years on the Transportation Committee and worked with Commissioner Savas and along with Jamie Damian and Lindgren. And I'm currently on the Senior Advisory Council in the age-friendly communities. And, you know, being a volunteer, I was offered the opportunity a couple of years ago to go to a TED Talk that the Health Department put on. And just getting the right to put on a TED Talk was pretty impressive. That doesn't happen very often to very many places. I left that meeting very impressed with what went on and with the Health Department, and I approached the young woman who kind of put that on, Erica Zoller, and asked her if there was anything I could do in the future with the Health Department. And then I was contacted about becoming a volunteer with the blueprint. I served on the Culture of Health Subcommittee. My wife took her 38 years of medical experience with Sisters of Providence and worked on the access to health. And the 269 folks who were involved in this project, I can't tell you how impressed I was with the knowledge and the expertise. You're going to hear from some of those folks who have spent their careers working in these different areas, unlike me, who retired a few, well, not a few, many years ago from Oregon Public Broadcasting. So I will let most of those folks explain the important, the heavy lifting kind of projects that we did on this. What I can say to you as a volunteer, and as you heard last week from my friend Ann Burns... What I can say to you as a volunteer, and as you heard last week from my friend Ann Burns, that being a volunteer, often the success of that means showing up. And we keep doing that over and over again. But the thing that I'm real comfortable in bringing to the table today is to talk about the Health Department and the folks who compromised that organization. Those folks brought a wealth of information to us. I learned so much at every meeting I went to, and it was so impressive. And I can tell you, did I do something wrong?
[laughing]
Oh, is it? Okay. Then I will cut it short. But I guess in closing, what I can say is that any investment you make with Dawn and her staff will be rewarded. These are a great group of people. They're dedicated, they're inventive, they're intelligent. And I've never seen a group work as hard and as diligent as Dawn and her group. And thank you for letting me speak.
And thank you very much. Linda?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Linda Eastland, and I'm the Special Education Director at Clackamas Education Service District. And I also served as the Chair for the Access to Care Subcommittee. The work of the blueprint, I think, is really important and vital to this county, because it sets a reference point for where we are. It provides us with an intention and a marker so that we can identify not only where we are, but where we intend to go. And I think that's critical. I think the social determinants of health involve a tremendous network, and it's going to take, as Dawn has said a few times, a really intentional effort to address each of the threads of that network, because they're all intertwined. As an educator, especially as an Education Service District member, my role is a convener, and it is to address systems. And so, this blueprint is really important to my work to be able to address the equity of opportunity. I consider equity of educational opportunity around the county, but equity for all children and families in our community is something that's really critical and important to me. And I think the blueprint helps moves, move us towards that. Being on the committee, I did hear some things that were a little unusual to me, and I wanted to share a couple of those with them. And it gave me a little sense of what your challenges might be, because when a dentist was describing the impacts of oral health, I thought, oh, we have to address that, because the impact of unmet oral health needs across a lifetime is critical. And then when I heard about the concerns around our residents who are aging, I thought, oh, we have to address the aging population, and that's critical. And so, you know, you are constantly faced with myriad and compelling requests. But one through line I did hear was around mental health, as we've already discussed today. I appreciate your conversation. And I heard it from Stephanie with Aging and Disability Services talking about the isolation that our seniors have, and the loneliness and depression and high suicide rates among our elderly. And I heard it from Amy Jo, our superstar paramedic, talking about responding to communities on those calls and seeing the impact of unmet mental health needs. And I heard it from Gally Murray, who was talking, or was talking about white males in their early 40s are high risk for suicide in our county. And I see it in the schools, and I see how we are overwhelmed and cannot address the, both the quantity of need and the seriousness of the mental health challenges that are coming to schools. And so, I see, as a blueprint, we spent a lot of time addressing this with intention and had some good ideas. And so, I hope that you will consider seriously adopting the blueprint and then providing funding opportunities through that, so that we can make this community a place that we all feel safe and healthy in. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Next is Molly Haynes and Joseph Merrick. I've heard that name before. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to present this morning. My name is Molly Haynes. I'm the Director of Community Health for Kaiser Permanente in the Northwest Region. And I'm also a member of the Public Health Advisory Committee and have been for a number of years. And I served on the Culture of Health Subcommittee for the blueprint process. And I just want to reiterate what others have said about Dawn and her staff. It was such a pleasure to work with them throughout the process. They led a very deliberate process and were very committed to engaging the community, which I know takes a lot of resource, but is, is very important. It's through that kind of engagement that you're going to have partners come to the table and bring their resources to this work. It's, it should never be just the county or government resources that are creating health in our communities. It's really everybody that's necessary for that, and I think you're going to see that as part of this process. I was very impressed at the commitment, level of commitment of so many people throughout this process. The number of meetings that everyone kept coming back to was really quite, quite impressive. A couple of other things I want to say about the process that I think are really important for people to understand is that it just provides a really important roadmap, like Dawn was saying, to keep everybody pointed in the right direction. We could do what I call, which is the peanut butter spread. We do that a lot, where we just spread resources kind of all over the place, and we never really see great impact from that. And so, I think even though we have to do the hard job of prioritizing where resources go, you're a lot more likely to see impact that way. I also really appreciated the focus on trauma and equity and really addressing the root causes of health, things like racism, institutionalized racism that we know has had a huge impact on our communities of color in particular. And addressing those traumas is going to be really important to see the impacts in our communities. So, again, thank you for the opportunity. Kaiser Permanente is committed to being involved and engaged as we move forward, and we look forward to continuing our relationship. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Joe?
Good morning, Chair Bernard, Commissioners. My name is Joseph Merrick. I am the Manager of the Transportation Safety Program for the Department of Transportation and Development, which also includes our Drive to Zero Program, which has a goal of eliminating fatal and serious injury crashes by 2035. I had the opportunity to serve on both the Access to Care Committee, as well as the Culture of Health Committee. The blueprint is really an extremely important part of the county's strategic priorities, which, which I've summarized down to healthy people, safe roads, and vibrant economy. And I play on the safe road side and, and try to reach over to the healthy people side, as well as the economy side. And so, I really appreciated the opportunity to be able to bring health and transportation together and talk about them, because the, the two are so entertied. As you know, most crashes in Clackamas County have a human error component. But we also know that when people are healthy, and that means mind, body, and spirit in my simplistic traffic engineering mind, they're going to be better users of the system, whether they're walking, whether they're riding their bike, whether they're driving, or however they're getting around. And so, that's, that's really important, because we, we want people to get to their destination safely. And everybody deserves to get home safely to their families every night. Some of the things that I learned in the, the process of the blueprint was really this challenge, this challenge of access, and whether it's people not being able to get a ride to a health appointment, or even to go visit their friends at the senior center, or, you know, having to drive when they really shouldn't be driving. And also, this, this notion of if people aren't healthy, if they're taking a lot of medication or other things that cloud their judgment, they're not going to be good users of the system. And it also really has taught me to be, not to judge. You know, I'm looking at a crash report. I can't judge, because I don't know what's going on in people's heads. Another thing that really struck me during some of the discussions was the, the stress things that, that affect people. And one of the conversations that really impacted me was this discussion of a family that may be housing insecure. And so, they are scrambling, trying to find a roof over their head for either the next night or the next week. So, if they're traveling around trying to find these places, safety of the road is probably not going to be their top priority, because they're really trying to deal with this very mission-critical stuff for their family. And I think that's really important. Sometimes things that certainly I don't always think about as a traffic engineer, you know, as I'm looking at kind of that cold data. But in fact, it's fundamentally extremely important and has huge effect on what occurs on the transportation system. So, throughout the process, I was really impressed with the inclusiveness of the groups and the willingness to sit down and bring all these components together and talk about them, and begin to talk about how we can make differences within the county. And lastly, I just want to thank you for all of your support on both the public health side and the safety side. And I would encourage you to adopt our blueprint plan. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Deborah Mason and Amy Jo Cook. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners and everyone here for having us to speak. My name is Deborah Mason. I'm the Executive Director of the Clackamas Service Center. I also serve on the Public Health Advisory Committee, and I was able to serve on the Subcommittee for Access to Care. Couple of things that really stand out to me in this process, and I'm going to echo some of the previous sentiment, was just how amazing it was working with the Department of Public Health and Dawn's team. I've never seen a group of people so determined and so motivated for positive ends, and it was really impressive, and I felt really honored to be a part of this process. I think a couple of things that stand out that really point to what I think is going to be the success of this blueprint is the fact that diversity of our county was taken so seriously. You don't have to drive too far from here or any other point to see how the landscape changes. Our county is very diverse, and so, I think the fact that these equity zones have been set up, and we're going to take into account those zones and what they need differently, I think is really important. The other piece that I found that I think will ensure success is the trauma-informed approach. I know from my perspective and the work that we do at the center, 100% of our folks are, have either experienced trauma or experiencing it on a daily basis. Living in poverty is traumatizing, and so, you come to life with various different sets of experiences. And so, the fact that this plan works through that lens, I think, will ensure its success. So, I feel really, really good about that. In terms of the Access to Care Subcommittee and the work that we did there, something happened to me. It's happened before, and it may have happened to all of you. You're sitting in a room, listening to different people speak, amazing individuals that represent organizations that are doing tremendous work. And you think, how in the world is anyone in need in our county? We've got so many good resources. And the fact of the matter is, one of the biggest barriers we see is just that awareness. So, we've got all these great agencies doing great work, but do people know about it? So, it's that awareness piece that is addressed in the blueprint. There's very specific strategies to increase awareness, because there's a lot of good work happening in this county. People just don't know about it. Now, the other piece of that is that if people find out about it, they, they learn about a service that they really need. Can they get there? So, there's that transportation piece again. That's a number, probably on the top three barriers that we see at the center. Do people know that we exist, and can you get there to access the services? So, I think the fact that this blueprint has very detailed strategies around both of those issues is really great. And I think that's also going to ensure its success. And I would strongly recommend, it sounds like we're going to adopt, but that there's support for further implementation of this blueprint. And thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
So, is the Clackamas Service Center reopened?
No, not yet.
I was wondering, the fire which...
You've got an invite very soon for our grand reopening. It's, it's happening in the next few weeks.
I thought so. I remember seeing the invite. Great, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Cook. I'm a paramedic firefighter with Clackamas Fire. I currently serve in the role as community paramedic. I don't reside in the county, but given the work that I do, I have a vested interest in the health of Clackamas County. I was fortunate enough to be asked to serve as a member of one of these blueprint committees, and my committee ended up being Access to Care and Human Services, which worked really well for what I do. When we first started, we noticed our biggest barrier was going to be that of health equity. How on earth do we serve a county that is larger than some states? How do we make sure that people in Welch's and Colton and all those areas have access to the same kind of opportunities that the people in Oregon City or Milwaukee have? So, that was one of our big barriers that we had to, had to focus on. Fortunately, I worked with people that were ready for the challenge. One of the things that the blueprint was able to highlight was, just like Deborah said, the amazing resources that Clackamas County has. We have great programs, we have great services, and we just got to figure out how to get them to the people that need them and connect those resources where they're most needed. It also highlighted the need for collaboration and partnerships. Individually, we can do really good work. But when we start getting out of our silos and we pull those resources together and we collaborate, the work we can do is exponential. It's not one plus one is two. It's one plus one is, oh, my gosh, look what we just accomplished. And we're able to get a lot of things done when we're able to collaborate. The other thing about a committee was a learning experience for me. As a 911 provider, when there's a problem, somebody calls 911, we arrive, we assess the situation, we come up with a game plan, we fix the problem, and we go home. A committee is a whole different thing. We figure out what the problem is, we figure out a solution, and then we present it to you. There was no implementation, which left me kind of hanging, because that's not what I'm used to. So, you guys are in a unique situation, right here in front of you. You have the opportunity to turn all that hard work into action. I heard a senator, Hal Rogers, recently say that a vision without funding is a hallucination. And that fit right in with why I'm here for you today. You guys have the opportunity to turn this vision into reality. You have the ability to take all of this hard work and see it through. Because I have a vision that with your help and your support, we can have health equity. We can have a healthier Clackamas County, and this vision becomes a reality and not a hallucination. Thank you.
Great. Well, I'm excited about adopting this plan, because, you know, for a long time, I've been here almost 10 years. We do kind of spread the peanut butter. And this gives us an opportunity to focus our investments and really make a measurable difference. One of my issues has always been, when I was Mayor of Milwaukee, I knew nothing about what the county did. So, making sure we reach out to mayors and city councilors and staff in the cities is going to be key. They, until I got here, I, I knew, knew nothing about how we house vets or how we help veterans. And thanks to the work of some staff here, I learned that. The other thing I learned immediately when I got here was we dissolved. I don't know that we dissolved a group. It's hard to remember nine and a half years ago. But there was this program maybe that we dissolved. And then we heard from the advisory group that that was not a good idea. Well, so now, instead of doing stuff like that, we look to the advisory group for advice. So, having all these people at the table, I think, was, and participating in them, as we all have, was very helpful. And, you know, really helped give us direction and a reason for, we all have reasons why we do this job, but a better reason to, or a better focus on how we can make a difference in this county. So, I appreciate your volunteerism. Look forward to the grand opening of, and what I've seen is it's pretty impressive what you guys have done. And the community donations and partnership and the work that the community has done to get you guys back up and running is tremendous. So, look forward to that. And we have Mr. Savis.
Yeah, just, just real quickly.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Savis gets started, I have an appointment at noon, so I have to leave now. I will say that I do support approval of the, of the plan.
You could make a motion and then add, why don't you make a motion?
So, you come vote.
All right. Well, I will move. Where are we here? I move, we approve, or adopt the blueprint for a healthy Clackamas County.
Second.
Yes, we moved in second, that we approved the blueprint for a healthy Clackamas County. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Back to you, Paul.
I just want to just share that Amy...
Sit down.
I want to share, Amy, you kind of captured one of the things I was getting at, was really about the collaboration. I think we have a lot of resources out there, and I think we're going... I think we have a lot of resources out there, and I think we don't really know that they're out there, or some people don't know how to attack to them. And I think even Deborah's point as far as the awareness issue. So I really, what resonates with me is the collaboration with all those sources, and I think it's really about navigation. How do we get people to navigate what's out there today and work with other partners?
I agree completely.
Yeah. So thank you for articulating that.
Thank you for passing this.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
Glad you came here from Florida. The weather's better here. See, I remember.
Less alligators, too.
Yeah, less alligators than red ants.
Yeah. Oh, yes. Thank you, Mary. With that, we'll adjourn as the Public Health Board and reconvene as the County Commission and move on to the consent agenda and ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay. Today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of an amendment to the inter-agency agreement between the Housing and Community Development Division and the Social Services Division for the Jackson Place Transitional Housing Project. Approval of Amendment Number One for an intergovernmental revenue agreement with Lane County for online food handlers training testing project. Approval of Amendment Number Eight for the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority for operation as the local public health authority for Clackamas County. Approval of Amendment Number One to a professional services agreement with Laboratory Corporation of America for laboratory services for Clackamas County Health Centers Division. Approval of an intergovernmental subrecipient agreement, Amendment Number Two, with the City of Lake Oswego, Lake Oswego Adult Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. Approval of an intergovernmental subrecipient agreement, Amendment Number Two, with the Senior Citizen Council of Clackamas County to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. Approval of a professional, technical and personal services contract with Northwest Family Services for alcohol and drug pre-engagement and outreach services at Clackamas County Middle and High Schools. Approval of Amendment Number Three to the professional, technical and professional services agreement with the Living Room for Youth, Young Adult Peer Support Services. Approval of Amendment Number Five to Professional, Technical and Personal Services Amendment with Oregon Family Support Network for Peer Delivered Services System of Care for Families in Crisis. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a trust deed securing and obligation to contribute funding to the Victory Road Foresight Road Intersection Realignment Project. Approval of Amendment Number Four to the contract with Obeck Consulting Engineers for consulting engineering services for the replacement of the Salmon River Elk Park Bridge, Road Bridge. Under our Finance Department, approval of a resolution for Clackamas County for budgeting of new specific purpose revenue for fiscal year 2017-2018. Approval of a resolution for Clackamas County for transfer of appropriations for fiscal year 2017-2018. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Business and Community Services, approval of a grant agreement with Oregon State Marine Board as part of the Maintenance Assistant Program for fiscal year 2018-2019. Under Public and Government Affairs, approval of a contract with Oregon Public Corporation Doing Business as Pamplin Media Group for publication printing services for the Clacko Quarterly. Under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of a resolution for North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for transfer of appropriations for fiscal year 2017-2018. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Clackamas Community College for community-based instructional programs. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Clackamas Community College for educational enrichment services. Approval of a public improvement contract between North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Green Thumb Landscape and Maintenance, Doing Business as GT General Contracting. Under Water Environment Services, approval of a material and services agreement between Atlas Copco Compressors and Clackamas County Service District Number One for the Tri-City Water Resource Recovery Facilities Process Air Blower System. Approval of a materials and services agreement between Atlas Copco Compressors and Water Environment Services for the Tri-City Water Resource Recovery Facilities Process Air Blower System. And approval of Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment Number Two with Sladen Constructors, Inc., for the Kellogg Creek Water Resource Recovery Facility Improvement Project. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
That's the first time I've seen a maximum on a bid like that. That's great. Do any commissioners want to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded almost unanimously to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We're on to county administrator updates.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got several good things to share with you. First has to do with our Water Environment Services Department. And of course, as you all know, over the course of the past year and a half, we've been taking the necessary steps to, in effect, consolidate Clackamas Service District Number One, Tri-City Service District, and the Surface Water District of Clackamas County into kind of a single entity. And as a result of that work, one of the things we just learned this week, that our debt is now, we are now rated AAA with our WES organization. We've been upgraded from AA+ to AAA, and much of the reason that that's the case is because we have been taking these steps to consolidate and strengthen the position of the utilities there. This upgrade will help save money for our customers of WES through ultimately implementing lower interest rates, which result in lower rates overall and lower costs for future projects. I just wanted to say what a great job to everyone involved, from both the County Council's office and our Water Environment Services Department as well.
Hey, Dawn, before you move on, I actually have a question, something I could probably ask you another time, but I'm going to ask you now. And that is, you notice, I noticed that Salem and even Wilsonville, and there's another city that's sending their water samples out of the state. And I was wondering, our WES does testing. I was wondering if we shouldn't take a look at, could we provide that service?
Yeah, and I am trying to recall some of the history of this. It looks like Mr. Savas has got a little bit better memory on this than I do.
So we, most water facilities, whether it's wastewater or drinking water, do testing for certain constituents. And in this case, this is one that's not often tested, so we don't have, can't test for that particular element here locally. I suppose that if it is a recurrence, that we will, but we do water testing, but we just don't test all those different constituents.
Well, it seems to...
But happy to explore a little further.
Yeah, it seems to me it might be something we'd want to look at, because if we're sending it out of state, why not bring it back in-house? If we have a lab, and it's a matter of doing, I don't know, some microscopic testing or whatever, maybe it's something we could look at providing services to other people.
Sure. Yeah, we'll check into it. Then I've got a couple of other items to share. Of course, yesterday, the county and its partners, we held a groundbreaking event for Rosewood Terrace, which is a new affordable housing project in Happy Valley. This project will house more than 200 families and provides needed workforce housing during housing crisis. The project will also help the county reach its goal of 800 to 1,200 new units in the next seven years. Residents will be starting to move in around next April, and overall, the project's really slated to be completed by the winter of 2020, so making progress on this particular project. And then lastly, we had a Clacko TV video showing how two Canby schools had installed milk dispensers in order to reduce waste. And this has apparently had kind of a considerable ripple effect. We saw five school districts in Clark County, Washington, who apparently saw the video, decide to install milk dispensers themselves over the next school year. And our Resource Conservation and Solid Waste staff were told by the Clark County School's Recycling Coordinator that the reason was what they saw on the video. Their milk dispensers, of course, are much better for the environment as they cut down on the use of milk carton waste every day, and I just wanted to express some thanks to our Resource Conservation and Solid Waste Program staff for helping to spread the word, not just to reduce waste here in Clackamas County, but also to reach across state lines.
Great. And not to be correcting you, the Rosewood Terrace, while the address is Happy Valley, it's in unincorporated Clackamas County, it's actually in Milwaukee's UGMA. So I would say that if we're to look at where affordable housing is in Clackamas County, it is not in Happy Valley. It's most of, a lot of our, like Milwaukee has a lot of affordable housing. Not enough, right? But you don't see a project like this happening in many communities. And Clackamas County, the Board of Commissioners, and actually the taxpayers throughout the county are funding this Rosewood Terrace near a light rail station, the Green Line, right? Yeah. The Green Line near Clackamas Town Center. And it's, the Rosewood Terrace is a fairly good-sized project, over 200 units, right? 220?
Twelve.
Twelve. 212 units. Also, Metro did provide some funding for that project, $500,000 in a transit-oriented development. They could do a little better than that, I think, but, don't you?
Almost $65 million, 500, yeah, I think might be a little better.
Anyway, I'm excited about it, and we were all there to throw some dirt around. Appreciate it. Thank you. You know, I used to, I'd see on the news murder in Milwaukee, and it'd always drive me crazy, because it wasn't in Milwaukee. It's just a post office address. I used to call up the newspaper and say, this is not true, that's not true, that's not Milwaukee. Anyway, who's up next? It looks like you are.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to piggyback on looking at being sustainable and looking at how we can reduce our carbon footprint. So I've been thinking a lot about that lately. Commissioner Schrader and I had the opportunity of going on a tour with, of Tillamook County, and we looked at fish farms and cows. What did they call them? Fish farm and, anyway. We had, we had quite the tour, but what really impressed me on this tour was going to the Fish Whiskey Creek Shellfish Hatchery, and they actually make the oysters from the beginning through going to the table. And, well, they, they cut it off and they send it off to other places to actually grow the oysters. But they begin them in a hatchery, and learning that industry and what they've gone through because of climate change and how they've had to change practices is really something, when you hear it right there. And it's pretty dramatic. That's on the coast, it's with the ocean, and there's definitely, they will say, it has impacted our industry, and it is very, very real. So that leads me to, well, we're here in Clackamas County, we're not on the coast, but how's our climate action plan? And I know within our county, we do a lot within what we do here, but what are we doing to reach out beyond here? Just like Administrator Krupp had said, that we are looking to do that as well. So I think it's time that we actually look at our climate action plan, and we look at what else, what other influence we can have really brought to light. Sometimes when you go away from your own county, you look at what's happening in other places, it helps us refocus here. So that's on my mind. And for the dogs, since Commissioner Humberson is out, this is Reba. She is a Labrador Retriever who is looking for a forever home. She is five years old and is looking forward to getting outside and spending some time with you. She is not a fan of cats and would do best in a home with children over the age of 13. If you're looking for a pal to go on adventures with, then she may be your gal. Go and meet her today. For more information about Reba and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services, (503) 655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs.
Looks vicious.
Commissioner Schrader.
I'm thinking a lot of labs don't like cats, though. That was part of the problem with my labs is, you know, they said, oh, they love cats, but it wasn't cats and loving them in a good way. It was like lunch, cats for lunch. So anyway...
Like for lunch?
Yeah, cats for lunch, yes. They would terrorize the cats. Yes, absolutely. In any case, thank you, Commissioner Fisher, for mentioning our trip to Tillamook the other day. We all attended, I think most of us attended, the Association of Oregon Counties on Monday. I was there, actually, and attended all the public lands meetings, and that was a nice segue to go to Tillamook and not only look at the fish hatcheries, the oyster industry, you know, the salmon and fish industries, we also got a chance to visit privately harvested land from Stimson Lumber, and they gave us an overview of what their forestry practices are in order to make sure, again, that they keep the air clean, the water clean, and that they are harvesting in a sustainable manner. So that was rather interesting. We also had an opportunity to visit a mechanized dairy. And this is a dairy where basically how they really get rid of, or actually how they reuse the waste from the cows, how they take it and how they store it, how they clean it up, and also how they milk the cows with robots, which was fascinating, because I was kind of thinking, oh, this is getting a little 1984 for me with the, you know, robot milking a cow, but the cows like it, because they get to kind of go in and out when they want. So when they're starting to feel a little uncomfortable and feeling like they need to be milked, they kind of line up, go right in, and then walk right out, and just seem to be a happy bunch of cows. So very interesting to see that. And obviously, here in our county, our agriculture's a little bit different. We have mostly a large number of small farms, lots of berries. We do have some dairy. I do know that we have a cheesemaking area, too, here in this county. It is a small business that I'm going to visit in the next few weeks that kind of does that, but it's big news in Tillamook County, and they are actually also going to be opening a very, very new cheese museum, which is going to be absolutely fabulous. So it was a great trip. We had a lot of fun together, and both, you know, Commissioner Fisher and I got to reconnect with the folks from County College, so.
Old cheese.
And I think we ought to do, pardon me?
Old cheese?
Old cheese, new cheese, cheese, cheese. You have to, remember, with cheese, you have to kind of...
Yes, age it.
Age it. Okay, so I guess you could...
It's better with age, like us.
Yeah, I know. So that was, that was, that was really fabulous. I will mention, I wanted to thank Dawn Emrick and all the folks with the work they did. They actually did come to our Workforce Board, and I did attend that meeting where they actually did their outreach to Clackamas Workforce Partnerships. We do know that having a decent job and a living wage is also going to be a part of that health continuum, so people can have a good house, good food, and healthy ways to live, and she was great coming to that. The other thing that happened this weekend, I had an opportunity to help serve breakfast in Boring with their, their waffle and strawberry feed this past weekend, and that was absolutely most fun I've had in a long time. Lots of waffles, lots of strawberries, lots of whipped cream, and, and good coffee and good friendship and fellowship with our folks out in Boring, Oregon. I also had a chance to visit the Clackamas County Environmental Learning Center, which has recently been remodeled, opened up, and is now really becoming a premier riparian area. And to your comments about sustainability, yeah, actually, I've already got a meeting scheduled with Evan Polk of our Sustainability, because we've been talking about that, and mine was after a kayak trip, when I was approached and said, have you? So we'll make sure that this is a two-for-one here, and that we work together on this and get invited to that meeting.
Yeah, that would be good. I just emailed Evan today to talk with him, and he's gone today, but maybe we... I just emailed Evan today to talk with him, and he's gone today, but maybe we could meet with him together.
Already, already arranged it with Emily.
That is great.
So, let's just go ahead and make that happen, because there's a lot of energy out there for that. The other thing I just wanted to let my colleagues know is that next week, I will be giving you a briefing of my, my trade mission to China. It was extremely intriguing, and I went with the Association of Southeast Asian Nations, which includes Cambodia, Burma, Myanmar, Thailand, Vietnam. We had representatives from Tasmania, actually, as well. We had representatives from Kenya. And we also had representatives, you know, from Japan, and we had one representative from Germany, believe it or not. And this was a mission, looking at, again, what can we export, not only to China, but also, it gave us an opportunity as a county now to make those connections with Southeast Asian Economic Development Directors, Economic Development Specialists, to see, how can we open that up, be a little more international? Because as I always say, we're a $1.2 billion economy, actually an enterprise in a global economy, and how we can open that up for our local growers here. We already do a significant amount of exporting with our berries and our fruit crops. Tillamook actually has opened up the East Asian, the Southeast Asian market with their cheese, believe it or not. And they had folks come out there a few years ago and are now beginning to export artisan cheeses there. So, so we're local and we're also global, so there you go. Okay, let's move to the word of the week. Haphazard. It's an adjective, irregular governed by chance. Did you know something that is done in a haphazard manner is not guided by a system or a regular method? After seeing the haphazard condition of the library shelves, Beth decided on a new approach to ensure that the library was returned to its pristine condition. And we'll have to use pristine next week, that's a good word, too. Okay, arts and culture in the county? Okay. Clackamas Repertory Theater presents Wing It: Spit and Spat, the Musical for Kids. And if my grandchildren were here, I'd definitely bring them. Clackamas Rep is putting on Wing It, and it's an interactive series of shows for children aged two to 10 years old. This episode will feature two singing and dancing cats, Spit and Spat. They're sure to have fun. This is this Saturday, June 16th, at the, 10:30 at the Osterman Theater on the Clackamas Community College campus. And our Native American colleagues, the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron, present the Tumwater Lecture Series. It's a series that's been organized by the Confederated Tribes to honor their ancestors, the indigenous people of the Portland Basin. Four lectures, each starting on the hour, address various issues unique to the people, history, and natural resources of this area. That is also June 16th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. I think this is amazing. We just reconnected with our Native American colleagues because of the presence of all the, all the heritage work that's been really kind of coalescing around Westland and Oregon City in the falls. So, if you get a chance to go to that. Also, Lakewood, Lakewood's new season is up on its website, so take a look at that, Lakewood Theater and the Arts. Also, remember that's the lobster feed, June 16th, that night. That's their big fundraiser with their Rotary Club for the year. And also, Lake Oswego Festival of the Arts is next week. I always ask Sonia what Kirk's up to, so, still same stuff or new stuff or...
Yeah, well, I just wanna give a, I talked last week about Mass, Leonard Bernstein's Mass, which was at Merrill Hurst University, which was absolutely fabulous. There were over 300 people that participated in it. It was an incredible event, and it was kind of sad, because that was kind of a send-off for the music department there. Very, very heartfelt.
I had one question, and you're probably not gonna be able to answer this. There were four lectures. Are there the same lecture, or are there four different lectures?
It says here, each four lectures, each starting on the hour. So, it looks as if it's one day with, like, at 1:00 a lecture, 2:00 a lecture, 3:00 a lecture...
Different, on a different subject.
Yeah. Each starting on the hour, and various issues. So, it sounds like it's a whole day of Native American history. I know that I'm gonna be doing some volunteer work at the Pride Event Saturday, but maybe if I have time, I'll try and drop in there, too. There's never enough time in the day, and you can't, you know... Oh, and I also did go to the Spring Water Grange Breakfast with Ken Humberton, that was fun, too. Very cool. So, all right, anyway, sorry.
Commissioner Savas?
Well, I have to chuckle a little bit on the, on the haphazard. So, the context I often hear that used is about, you know, politicians and government. And it was, it was interesting to read the, or to watch Commissioner Schrader read it. Again, irregular, governed by chance.
Governed by chance.
Governed by chance, yeah. And of course, this, the other part, by half has, not guided by a system or a regular method, but I just think it's a little humorous. Also, on the, on the talk about dairies, I grew up in a dairy area, dairy town.
Dairy area.
Dairy area, yeah, dairy area. So, the whole thing about containers or dispensers, you know, we, we, when my dad went to the dairy to get milk, bring home the groceries, we had a two-and-a-half gallon dispenser that we popped in the refrigerator with a little spigot on it. So, was that similar to the, what was displayed in the video?
Yeah, these are like large milk dispensers that are there for the food.
Yeah, we had that at college.
Yeah, but we had a family of seven and two, so, so we, you know, that didn't go very far. Two-and-a-half gallons didn't go very far. But I always chuckled when we went to the store, bought these little containers. Every time I see those half-gallon containers, I still chuckle, thinking that, that's not what I'm, you know, it's not how I grew up. But, yeah, the conversation about, earlier with the health and, you know, water quality, air quality, just, I just want to let my colleagues know that for the last three years, I've been trying to point out at J-Pact about electrification, especially in the means of diesel. You gotta remember, our kids are being commuted to school back and forth in diesel buses, and going down our streets where we live and where our kids play are the garbage trucks, which are diesel-powered. And some of their, have converted, they're converted to either CNG. But I have, really have been advocating, and I still do advocate very strongly for, you know, electrification. And what struck home this week was, oh, the last time, one of my forklifts is electric, that was, the battery was like $7,000. But this week, fortunately, my other forklift, my, the first one I bought 15 years ago had cheaper batteries, so I had to replace the batteries this week. So, on that one, far cheaper than $5,000. But, you know, I really, the whole issue about transportation, I know a lot of people say, "Well, cars are gonna be outdated, and then the gasoline engine is gone." And I think a lot of us foresaw that happening sooner than it actually is coming, but it is there. And I just have always made the comment is, well, just remember that congestion will still be there, and we'll just be congested on the freeways at some point with electric vehicles. So, one sort or another, as we're really battling our transportation system. I had the pleasure this week, I also went to the strawberry waffle thing in Boring, which is very cool, very, very neat, and attended some of the other events you all mentioned. But the one that wasn't mentioned yesterday was the, last evening, was the opening, the groundbreaking for the Wichita Park in Milwaukee, which some of us were indeed at as well. But I wanted to point that out. It was nice to see, to some degree, a park being built in a community that, you know, really needs a park and had, it was, it was not a high-income area, and it was in the middle of a neighborhood that was in dire need of that. And we learned a few things about some of the safety issues and some of the amenities along there that are badly needed. So, that was really a great event. I had, we have all had a busy weekend, and I look forward to the parade this weekend. It's, try to juggle schedules, and is it always on Father's Day? That's a question I have. Do we, do we recall? It's not always on Father's Day. Yeah, okay. Well, anyhow, I wish everyone a great weekend, and hopefully we'll have a nice, weather-wise, we'll have another nice weekend and a dry, a dry parade.
Great. Boy, a lot of subjects. I'll be short. I had an opportunity to be on a radio show last night with Laurie, is it Stedman?
Stedman, yeah.
Stedman.
She's really good.
Stedman, Multnomah County Commissioner, and Jeff Goodman, Lake Oswego Commissioner, and talk about, you know, what we think are the greatest, biggest issues. And it was narrated, or the radio show, like X-Way, X-Ray Radio or something like that. It's kind of a news show, but probably the biggest thing that I thought about is how different we are. Counties are so different from one another, Multnomah County versus Clackamas County. You know, we talk about school funding, lots of cities do help fund schools, but we don't, we provide services in school, but we don't oft, we don't necessarily fund them. And one of the big differences, of course, is that we're 50% forest, and it's not, and our terrain is so different. You know, bus service or transportation services in, in Multnomah County Commissioner's area is, it's flat. It's very different from where, where we have. Matter of fact, you look at the, out the window where we were at, and there was a, it was a cinder cone, is what we were looking at, covered in trees. But we're very different. We talked about a variety of issues, and that includes transportation, school funding, some of what we'd like to see happen, what kind of services we provide. But it was a, it was a good opportunity to talk about, you know, the issues that we all face. Affordable housing, housing planning for transportation projects before the project starts, all those things are things that I mentioned. But, you know, I guess in the end, I think they asked us what we'd like to really see resolved before we leave. And for me, it was the murders of family members in domestic violence cases. You know, we've done, I mean, we, we've seen that go up and down, but Clackamas Women's Services, the Family Justice Center, all those things are reaching out to reduce the impact of domestic violence. And I think we're really, first, you know, you always wonder, we're, we're very busy across the street here. Where'd those people go before? You can't help but wonder where they went before, but now it's kind of a one-stop place. If you need help, you go there and you get the help. But often, domestic violence ends up in violence or murder. And I think I'd like, before I leave the county, there are many other things I'd like to do, but to end murders and those kind of things would be one I could be very proud of, and we would all be very proud of. We've done a good job doing that. But anyway, with that, I look forward to the opening of Clackamas Service Center, which was destroyed in a fire, it seems like it's been about two years ago, but...
It's less than a year.
Really? Less than a year?
I was supposed to be having breakfast, meeting Deborah Mason, the day that the Clackamas Service Center caught on fire, so she didn't make it to breakfast.
Oh, yeah, I can imagine. Well, with that, we'll adjourn, and have a great weekend. Thank you.